I'm Dale Wesley. I'm a candidate for the school board in the Ann Arbor Public Schools. Unfortunately, our current board has listed as their top priority for next year to get along with each other, build on trust and respect. No mention of kids, no mention of curriculum, no mention of computerization, no mention of anything other than the fact that they think the top priority is to get along with each other. This is totally unacceptable. As a businessman, we did not have time to work on building harmony. We had time to work on productivity. And thus is the case with the school board. I'm not here to reinvent the wheel, but I would appreciate your support. And I can guarantee you that our priority will not be to get along with each other, but to make this school system even better than it is. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rosemary Austin, and I'm the membership director of the League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor area. I welcome you to this candidate forum, and today we will be hearing from candidates for the office of Ann Arbor Public School Board. Remember, the general election is Tuesday, November 6th. The League of Women Voters is pleased to be sponsoring the candidate forums. The League is a nonpartisan grassroots organization, and our membership is open to all persons over 18 or years of age, women or men. We invite you to join us, and you can get membership information on our website at The League does not support candidates or parties. We are nonpartisan. However, we do take stands on issues that we have studied. One of the League's important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls, and thus we bring you this program. Questions for today's forum have been selected by a committee of League members from a pool of questions submitted by the general community. We're broadcasting from the studios of Community Television Network, Channel 19, in Ann Arbor. Our moderator tonight is Judy Mitch, and there are other volunteers here from the League assisting with this program tonight. At this point, I will turn it over to our moderator, and she will explain the process. Judy?
Okay, thank you. Here we go with the process. On November 7th, we will be electing one member to the seven-member Ann Arbor Public Schools' Board of Education. And we have here tonight the two persons who are contending for that one seat. Before we started this program, we had a great drawing and determined who would be first and who would be second in each of the opening and closing statements. Having won that drawing as the opening statement beginning person, we're going to start with candidate Deb Mexicott, who is running for the school board, and she will have one minute for an opening statement, followed by her opponent Dale Leslie. So, Ms. Mexicott, please.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. I just want to tell you a little bit about myself. I am a lifelong Michigander and came to Ann Arbor in 1980 to go to graduate school. My degrees are in scene and costume design, and I was an undergraduate at Case Western Reserve in Cleveland. And then, of course, I graduated with my masters from the University of Michigan. I've been married for 30 years, and my husband and I have raised three children in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, and they have had an excellent education. I work at the University of Michigan. I coordinate the Arts at Michigan program. I have done that for five years, and that connects students to the arts in whatever way they would like to be connected, either as audience members, art makers, or student leaders in the arts. I have been nine years on the Ann Arbor Board of Education, and I've served for the last three years as the president, having been selected by my fellow trustees.
Okay, thank you very much. And we'd like to hear your opening statement, Mr. Dale Leslie.
Good evening, and I thank the League for this opportunity. Where else in the world, quite frankly, would a forum like this be able to be held? The United States of America is a great country indeed. My platform, my views are on DaleLeslie.org. If you go on the Internet, there's no www, there's no backslash, forward slash, colon, et cetera. We live in a beastly challenging era. Next year, in 2013, for the first time, we will have young people born in this century. I define that as teenagers. The first teenagers will be born, will have been born, in this century next year. And that means the rest of us were born in the last century. My son reminds me, Dale, you were born in the last century, in the first half of the last century. So, he kind of humbled me in that regard. But we really need to accept the challenge. The gauntlet has been dropped.
Okay, thank you so much. We will move now to questions. You have one minute to answer each of them, and we're going to start with Mr. Leslie and rotate back and forth. So, we're going into the alphabetical part here. All right, number one. What professional experiences have led you to run for the Board of Education? And which of those do you feel have been the most significant in preparing you for this job? Dale?
Unlike any candidate or elected official in recent memory, I bring the full qualifications of having been a businessperson in this community. My family owned Leslie Office Apply. Many of you are familiar with it. And as a result, I think I'll be valuable in bringing a businessperson's expertise, if you will, to the operation of the Ann Arbor Public Schools. I often thought, when I was in my business, that there needed to be a dialogue between business, the public schools, and labor. And to the best of my knowledge, that has never really existed, at least in the form that I think it should. So, if I'm elected, that's one of the main ideas I hope to bring to the fore, is to have an ongoing communication, if you will, between those three disciplines, because it is really necessary in order for this district to move forward in the community as well.
Okay, and your preparation, Ms. Mexicott?
Well, I've spent 20 years in student development and student affairs at the University of Michigan, connecting students to their developmental goals, primarily through their co-curricular participation. So, student organizations, leadership development. Basically, my job is to help students get the most out of their education at the University of Michigan, and has been for 20 years. Within that job, I've done a number of things. I supervise employees. I manage, you know, very large budgets. And I'm also a planner, organizer, event administrator. When you work in student affairs, you sort of have to understand the entire student, but also the entire system that keeps that student supported in their pursuits of their education. And so, I bring that expertise to the Board of Education.
Thank you very much. And we're going to go to you this time, and this question is for each of you. How racially and economically balanced are the individual schools within our school district? Do you foresee changes through the redrawing of district lines? Deb?
We pride ourselves in Ann Arbor on our diversity, and our diversity is across the district, every school, every level. And that's actually one of the strengths of our district, and one that we really consider a benefit to our students, to our staff, to our entire community. We think that the diversity of the Ann Arbor Public Schools is one of its defining aspects, and it's one that we value immensely. We do not anticipate that diversity changing through redistricting or through any other means, in part because our community is so diverse, but also because we hold diversity as such a value and so important for our students. So, my answer to that is, we value it, we're going to keep it, and we don't anticipate that changing in the future.
Okay, and your thoughts on that, Mr. Leslie?
Well, I would echo what she just said. I'm not here to reinvent the wheel. However, there is a disparity in learning achievement. The Education Department at the state level has evaluated the district, where a majority of our schools have an insufficient disparity in the eyes of the Michigan Education Department in learning achievement. We have people at this end and people at that end, and there doesn't seem to be much in the middle, and that concerns me. We need to address that issue, find out why it exists. Unfortunately, our superintendent has seemed to dismiss the education findings by the state as pure poppycock. And I think that we need to invite the state to come down and explain why we are deficient in this area, and give us their viewpoint.
Okay, thank you. We're going to stick with you on question number three. And this is for both of you, of course. How valuable is a liberal education in today's technological society? Are these views supported in the AAPS curriculum and budget? Mr. Leslie?
I'd like to think so, but at one of the board meetings I sat in on, the department chair from biology presented a proposal to buy a new textbook for that particular discipline. The current book they are using is 10 years old. I was just astounded. 10 years, five years in the computer age is an eternity, and yet we're using a textbook from a major science that is 10 years old. If my kids had been in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, and I had discovered that they were using information that was 10 years old in this day and age, I would have been irate. And there's no excuse for that. And then, my opponent said, in a rather off-the-cuff way, "I've been asking for a list of publications in the district that, in the dates of publication, but no one seems to honor my request." And I'm thinking, we need to know when the books in our district have been published that we're using in the classroom every single day. It's not a question of whether someone feels like they can give us that information. I would demand it as a member of the school board.
Thank you very much. Liberal education, today's society.
I think that liberal education and that the range of education for our students is more important than ever. We see these kinds of conversations going on at all levels. For instance, medical schools are now realizing that students that do not have strong humanities or strong interpersonal skills, who understand both Shakespeare and neuroscience, are just not the doctors that we really expect moving forward into the 21st century. My work at the university has been certainly in arts integration, and I know how important that is to problem-solving, creative thinking. And that is true of both my own personal views and the views of this board. We have kept our arts and humanities programs strong, award-winning, and well-resourced. But we haven't done it alone. The community has shown us that they value that breadth of education, and they have been willing to support it with both their dollars and their volunteer time, and that's the strength of the liberal arts education.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll stick with you on this for both of you. Your thoughts and personal opinions on the way technology is affecting teaching and learning in the schools? Is it improving student achievement, and by what measures?
I think that the improvement in student achievement comes when we meet students where they are and then take them to the place that we want them to be. We have technology natives in our millennial students, students who have grown up with technology and who use it as not something they've added on to their daily lives, the way some of us have. They are integrated into using their handheld pieces of technology to stay connected to information, to stay connected to each other, and to stay connected to even their mentors in our schools. So, what we need to do in order to improve achievement using technology is to understand that it's a tool, a tool that is used very easily and very comfortably by our students, and take what is best about that and the mentoring and multimedia that comes around with it, and create that integrated learning environment for our students.
Mr. Leslie, same question.
Dr. Jim Duderstadt, former president of the University of Michigan, spoke to our Kiwanis Club, and he was asked to compare the computer revolution to the industrial revolution. And he paused for a second, and he said, "No, I would compare the computer revolution to the discovery of fire." Now, that made jaws hit the floor. But what he said is very profound. We are in an era where we have to stay abreast and one step ahead of what is happening in reference to technology, especially when it comes to instruction of our students. As I said, I'm not here to reinvent the wheel, but I would like to see us more on top of what's new out there and what's being done to accomplish using technology in the classroom. I have a good friend, Jeff Bradley. He teaches at Skyline High School. He doesn't even use a textbook. He has built his own website as an instructional device in his class. His students log on to his website to learn in his class. This is technology. This is being applied right now as we sit here, and it needs to be looked at and emulated.
Moving on, next question. Mr. Leslie, go on back to you, or stay with you, I should say. This is basically a money question, but what measures can the board take to keep class sizes manageable? How important is class size in your view and in the view of the AAPS various stakeholders? So, class size and affording it.
I think class size is very important. Most of us, just using common sense, can figure out that if the class is too large or is above what can be handled on an organized basis, that really it hampers learning. As far as revenue is concerned, I don't think we've ever taken a hard and fast look about generating revenue in the district. I'm a member of Kiwanis, granted, that's a service organization, but we generate thousands and thousands of dollars in this community through different fundraising efforts, and there's absolutely no reason to me why the school district can't do the same. We have great facilities. We have a large auditorium. The library tells us they need a large auditorium. We have Pioneer High School auditorium that sits idle for four months out of the year. We can do it. We can generate money and limit class size in the same breath.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mexicott, class size.
As most people know, about 85% of the budget of the Ann Arbor Public Schools is people, and people are directly linked to class size, certainly teachers directly linked to class size. A few years ago, we made a decision to downsize classroom positions in order to meet our budget deficits and to achieve our financial goals. And class sizes rose slightly, and we were sad about that. We thought, well, maybe it's only a little bit, but it made us uncomfortable. We've been monitoring the situation. We are very concerned about the rise in class size as it relates to achievement. And so, this year, when the same kind of position reduction was brought forward to us, we, as a board, said, "No, we will not reduce positions." As a matter of fact, the other evening, we suggested that we may go back and look at adding positions because we want to address the class size issue.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll stick with you. Okay, this question is on customer service. Our governor has said that the role of government or governing persons, as in boards of trustees, your job is customer service. Whom do you regard as your customers for the Board of Education, and how would you grade the AAPS at serving their customers? Deb?
Well, by keeping our schools very strong, we serve our community in a myriad number of ways, and the community is our customer. Now, primarily, we serve the student, and our decisions are student-driven, they're student-focused, and they are about having that student achieve their maximum potential. But we know we have other stakeholders who care deeply about the public schools. We know that our staff and our administrators care deeply. Our community supports the public schools with their dollars and their time because they are stakeholders and it's so important to them, so they are customers as well. And then, we talk about the larger community. The business community is our customer because they employ our students, and they benefit from that workforce. And every homeowner is our customer. Every business is our customer because our students' achievement keeps our schools strong, makes this a great place to live, and so you can't separate the public schools from the community. We are all customers of the Ann Arbor Public Schools.
Okay, thank you. Customer service, Mr. Leslie?
Well, I would grade the school system very highly in customer service, but I'd give the board a flat F. As most of you know, they came out of their fall retreat with their number-one priority being to get along with each other. Now, that's the most absurd thing I've ever heard, to get along with each other. Number one, no mention of kids, no mention of curriculum, no mention of facilities. It's to get along with each other. The problem, in my estimation, is, A, they have a private agenda that each of them is pushing, thus they don't get along. And B, they're listening to people who are whispering in their ear that creates this continual conflict. And then, what about the voters? The people that elected them to office? Oh, they're third in the pecking order, as far as whom they listen to. So, as far as the district is concerned and the way it functions, I'm very pleased with it. I'm a product of it, so are my sons. But the board, to me, is basically dysfunctional.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll stick with you for this question, a vision question. Looking ahead 10 to 20 years, or whichever you prefer, explain one or more projects you'd like to initiate as a board member or support now to make your vision of the Ann Arbor Public Schools' future realizable. If that makes sense. What would you like to start now that would work?
Well, I have a number of little pet projects that I would like to see us implement, so to speak. I mentioned fundraising a moment ago. I would like to see us streamline our meetings. We have these board meetings that sometimes last until 2:00 a.m. What we need is a parliamentarian. We need a parliamentarian to sit there and expedite these meetings. There's no reason we should be there until 2:00 in the morning covering the district business. It's absolutely absurd. So, that's one thing I would like to see. You know, I'd like to see us more active in the community. I'm in Kiwanis. We used to have a representative from the public schools that participated in our club. No longer. I never see people representing the Ann Arbor Public Schools at any of these social activities where you're helping people in the community. I don't see them. I don't see them on projects that I'm involved in, and that needs to change. We need to have an attitude in the district that we're here to serve the public, but that also means whatever they give to us, we need to give back in some sort of public service.
Okay, thank you. Deb, 10 to 20 years ahead.
We have a comprehensive strategic plan that we have been following since 2006. It includes such things as the advancement of technology and how we will use it in the classrooms. It includes cleaving to global standards of achievement, personalized learning plans, maintaining our facilities at the levels that we want them maintained, and of course, keeping ourselves very strong financially. There are eight areas that we have addressed in our strategic plan, and we will continue to implement those areas as the top reason that the board does its work. It is the strategic plan that we follow in conjunction with the administration, and that is our roadmap to 10 years from now. And if we follow that strategic plan and carry out each piece of it, we are going to be in great shape in 10 years. And that plan was created with the community and every stakeholder as in 2006.
Okay, last question, hardest or easiest question? You've obviously prepped for this, and we thank you for that. Ms. Mexicott first, Mr. Leslie second. Kindly ask yourself the one question you wished we'd ask you tonight.
Hmm, I wish that you would have asked us about the efforts that we have put forward to close our traditional achievement gaps. We have, in the time that I have been on the board, we have looked at those students who traditionally achieve, and we have kept a lot of our programs and services to those students, to get them to be able to maximize their potential strong, while we have been helping struggling students, those who might be socio-economically challenged, those who might have a learning disability or may have a special need, or those who might be socio-economically challenged, to achieve at the levels that our better-resourced students have been achieving. In the time that I have been on the board, we have made substantial gains in closing those gaps, and in some cases have made gains of 30 and 40 points in terms of our standardized testing in certain areas. And I wish you had asked about that because that has been a real effort of the board and will continue to be until those traditional gaps no longer exist, and we've made a real improvement in those areas.
Well, note that question. Mr. Leslie, your question.
Well, I wish you would ask about the void in leadership that I see in the district, and I'll start with the board. They again came out with their number-one priority to get along with each other, which means to me that either, A, if they didn't know this existed, this type of condition of disagreement, then that is the fault of leadership, or B, if they knew about it and didn't do anything about it, that's poor leadership. Either way, it's poor leadership that was being exerted in direction of the board to allow this condition to develop. And I just think there are other areas where we could exert leadership that we're not. For instance, when we hire, we have kind of the same old traditional means of doing so. We're in the position of hiring a new principal at Ann Arbor Pioneer High School. This should be a national search. We have a prestige district here, and yet we go about filling these positions like we used to back in the '60s. And we need to launch a national search for the major positions in this district to really show that we are prestige and indeed do so in our conduct.
Okay, thank you so much, and we'll move to our closing statements, as predetermined by our lottery, which was won or lost. I don't know what the case may be. But first in the closing statement will be Deb Mexicott, please, two minutes.
I just want to speak to why I would like to return to board service and why I would ask for the support of the community. In the nine years that I've served on the board, I feel like we have really focused on student achievement, and that has been at the center of the work that I have tried to do on the board. I have tried to focus at all levels on our academic excellence, our traditional strength in our co-curricular programs, our vocational programs, all while doing our best to maintain our fiduciary role as stewards of the taxpayer money. I also have a proven leadership record. I have not only been elected three times the president of the Ann Arbor Board of Education, but I've also been a former chair of the Ann Arbor Parent Advisory Committee for Special Education, and I even serve in my neighborhood as a board member and a former president of the Forest Brook Athletic Club, so our local swim team. So, I have a proven record of leadership. And third, we have really focused on financial stewardship to get the best out of the monies that we are given by the state and by the community through their donations, through the foundation, through booster organizations, and quite frankly, through the tech bond that was just recently passed that has allowed us to already upgrade our facilities for the benefit of the community. And so, we maintain a fund balance. We have maintained our traditional excellence, all while the state has been underfunding public education for years. I would like to return to this work because I am passionate about public education, and I think that I have made a good case for your support in the fall. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to the voters.
We're glad to have you here. Mr. Leslie, your two-minute closing statement.
I tell people I have 36 years of experience in the Ann Arbor Public Schools, and they're awestruck, but it's true. K through 12 for me, K through 12 for my one son, K through 12 for the other son. 36 years of looking at the district from the inside out, and if you want to get a true perspective on how things operate, that's the best perspective to have. I'd like to share with you a visit I had to the Labor Hall last week, where they were telling me about contracts awarded to out-of-district vendors. The electricians have a 50% unemployment right now in this area. 50% of the electricians are without work, and yet we're awarding contracts to vendors outside of the district. There's one, for instance, from Coldwater. They're coming in here with their people, doing the work, and going home. Their paycheck leaves here, their allegiance leaves here. There's absolutely nothing that ties them to this community. It has an economic impact. This type of thing is not dealt with at all by the board about how we are bypassing our local vendors. And that's, again, where my business experience would make a contribution to the board, and I ask for your support on November 6th.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Rosemary?
Thank you, the candidates, for participating in today's forum, and thanks to Community Television Network for making this program possible. It will be rebroadcast many times between now and the election, along with the other forums that are taking place this week. It's also available on-demand for streaming onto your computer. You can go to our website, lvwannarbor.org, and find a link to the various forums that have come out this week. For additional balanced, nonpartisan information on candidates and ballot issues... For additional balanced, nonpartisan information on candidates and ballot issues, we have a new website, vote411.org, and you go to that website and enter your address. This will bring you information on the candidates and ballot proposals that you will be voting on, on your ballot. Remember, vote411.org. Please vote on Tuesday, November 6. And thank you for watching, thank you for caring, and thank you for voting.
Thank you very much.